Hit the half.
Biggest comeback ever.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. It's eight thirty, we'll get started. Morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town of New Canaan for Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-two. It says hybrid meeting, so we have Kathleen on by Zoom and. Anybody else on on by Zoom?
I don't think any presenters know. Everybody's here.
Okay, so. First item of business is the minutes of our March twenty-second meeting. Any comments or corrections on the minutes?
I have a few notes. I'll just send them directly to Tucker for changes.
Can you share them with us?
Oh, they're they're. They're just typos. I'll send them in. Nothing to stand to.
Got you. Okay. With that, anything I motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second favor, I, okay, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on an agenda topic scheduled for review and revoke. Comments may be sent electronically by email to B O S distribution at newcanac t dot gov, and if we receive any, we'll read them in the course of the meeting or after before the end of the meeting. I don't see any members of the public here other than. Well, there's no members of the public here, so no comments here and nobody. The first next item is the pollinator pathway with for shipper, the chairman of our.
Did you want to add the item?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We have we have an appointment to add to the agenda, so I move we amend the agenda. To make add an appointment when we get to appointments for Barb I can bomb to help you in the services.
Second.
Favor, I. Okay. Chris Shipper, the chairman of the Conservation Commission is here to talk to us briefly. Which one of these? Use use that mic there. This one? That's best, yeah. Plus, we'll sell traditions you too.
Good morning, Mr. Selectman, Selectman Williams and Corbett. Nice to see you both. Conservation Commission unanimously endorsed the pollinator pathway resolution before you for ratification. As you know, the Conservation Commission is chartered to oversee natural resources of New Canaan. Along with open space, clean air, fresh water, and reduced carbon emissions, we also add biodiversity maintenance as a goal. Pollinator plantings such as native flowers, shrubs, and trees form the basis of the food pyramid in the natural world. Bees, butterflies, dragonflies, birds, bats, all require nourishment from pollinator plants and the insects they host. This resolution was crafted by the New Canaan Sustainable C T Working Group and the Pollinator Pathway Group led by Counselor Robin Bates Mason with support from our Department of Public Works, the New Canaan Land Trust, the New Canaan Nature Center, the Beautification League, the Library, the Garden Club, the Glass House, the Norwalk River Watershed Association, and Planet New Canaan. The Conservation Commission supported this resolution as consistent with the miss with our mission to support and achieve sustainable Connecticut Silver Status, of which twenty-six counts, including Greenwich, Westport, and Litchfield, have already attained Silver Certification. And we believe it's fitting that this resolution be ratified as we head into Earth Day celebrations on April twenty-third. And I thank you for your support on this.
So you want us to endorse or adopt this resolution? You you adopted it as a commission.
Correct. And then we send it to you as a resolution or ratification. I don't know whether the next step would be the town council reads.
Well, this is directed really toward residents more than toward the town government, although we in terms of reducing lawn sizes and protecting soil by using natural pesticides and herbicides. Does this cost money?
This is actually. It could actually save money if you if you pursued a strategy of reduced lawn, more meadow, more plantings. You'd have less mowing, less noise, less air pollution, less carbon emissions. So I wouldn't I wouldn't pursue this as a money-saving objective, but as an environmental pathway forward. And I think that our town should be capable of of being a brighter light when it comes to environmental management and open space management. I would also note that this this effort was originally initiated when Cam Hutchins was chair of the Conservation Commission, and we have followed through on those desires.
I should have noted Robin Bates Mason has joined us. Robin, do you want to join? Robin is the head of our Sustainability Committee. And also, do you have questions or Kathleen or Nick, do you have questions?
So just sorry, state that. This was changed slightly for that reason, so it wouldn't be any money cost to the town. So we did change it, so it's not the tenants of the pollinator pathway per the pollinator pathway larger organization. It's just we support the New Canaan Pollinator Pathway, and we've changed it a little bit, and we worked with Department of Public Works, so it wouldn't be a burden on the town.
Don't mind burdens if they're good, but you have any questions, Kathleen?
Yeah, no, I love the alliteration of pollinator pathway, but I think we should change this the name to the Cam Hutchins Pathway. One of my dearest friends who who pushed this forward.
A good idea. Kathleen?
For thanks, I agree. I mean, I think all of these are terrific in terms of what our aspirations are and what our encouragement is. I just worry about the resolution and maybe we might want to add to this to to really say that this is something that we're not trying to just pass a resolution to encourage residents to do these four, three or four things. It's more it's really to sustain our, as you say, our silver status. I mean, I think making a resolution just to make recommendations is maybe not as appropriate as to say, we do have an objective here, and that is to maintain our silver status with the Connecticut sustainability. Do I have that correct?
So we have bronze status right now. We're working towards our silver status, but this this would go towards points for certification.
Having a resolution from the Board of Selectmen, is that correct?
Yes.
And so I would I would just suggest that that result that that be added as a bear as that that's, you know, that's what our intention is to achieve silver status and and that's why we're doing a resolution. There's lots of things that we would recommend to our community, but it would have to be based on something, I would think, and and having attaining silver status is certainly well worth going for a resolution from the Board of Selectmen and in the other town body for that matter.
Agreed.
Yep.
Okay, so we'll amend the resolution to put in a whereas New Canaan is seeking silver status. And this supports that. So we'll give us that language to add to.
What do we have to do to get gold status?
There actually is no gold status yet.
Not yet.
So silver is the highest.
Silver is the silver is the top.
Would that change, which we put into the resolution? Do we want to pass this out of the town council? Is that is that your thought or no?
I thought it was the Board of Selectmen that passed it.
We're the executive branch, so.
I will. We approve this resolution as amended, as suggested by Kathleen and do I have a second?
Second era.
Further discussion. All favor. Hi. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All your work on our sustainability initiatives. Okay, that brings us to our to ARPA funds recommendations. This is the phase four of our ongoing rolling approval of ARPA funds, and we'll have the Community Foundations work back in May for that aspect of for nonprofits. And but we have two proposals today. One is Waving Life Care Network for Telemedicine and the other Silver Hill Hospital for Behavioral Health Assessment Service Initiative. So Mr. Russ Barkdale, CEO and leader of Waving Life Care Network.
Kevin, can I just add, I'm I'm going to recuse myself from this, both from the vote as well as from any commentary.
Thank you, because Kathleen is a member of the board, a legal member of the board. I'm an ex officio member of the board, but my allegiance is to the town and not to the your to your organization, so I won't confuse myself.
Good morning, Selectman Corbett, Williams, and Moynihan. Thank you, as always, for your tireless commitment to New Canaan and our constituents. For the record, my name is Russell Barkstone, President, CEO of Wavney Life Care and all of its healthcare subsidiary corporations, which includes the visiting nurse and hospice of Fairfield County. I hold my master's degree in public and healthcare administration, and I'm a fellow in the American College of Healthcare Executives. I believe that I speak for Andrew in expressing our thanks for the invitation today to discuss the healthcare needs of New Canaan. I know that people are tired of hearing that we're living in unprecedented times, but we really are. The environment has changed. The healthcare environment has forever changed. During the pandemic, probably no more sacrifices were made than the men and women who showed up for work every day were caregivers, nurses, and physicians and put on protective personal equipment to serve their patients and residents with superior quality and compassionate care. Sadly, many direct caregivers, physicians, and nurses alike have left the profession altogether due to stress and burnout, while others have chosen alternative work arrangements. Next slide, please. As corporate attorneys and business leaders, you certainly appreciate the financial and clinical quality impact of supply and demand, the reduction of caregivers for an aging contingency contingency, the desire to have in-time quality access to care rather than extended delay for a medical office visit or risk entry into what would could be a highly infectious healthcare setting. It was these forces, coupled with the ease and timeliness of access, that catapulted telehealth into the limelight and showed payers, including Medicare, that it could be a cost-effective solution to enhance wellness, improved access, and quality health monitoring, all components of a highly valued healthcare model. While telehealth is the medical taxonomy or umbrella for many technological advances, Wavney's healthcare providers have found telemedicine to have the greatest positive impact on timeliness of care and quality outcomes. Telemedicine provides high-definition health screening, vital sign reporting, and provides higher-quality resolutions as stethoscopes sounds can be amplified, wound resolutions magnified, and electronic medical records accessed in real time. Next slide. There are dozens of studies that itemize the benefits of telemedicine. We've listed a few, but highlight only four. Around seventy percent of insurance insurer clientele want the option to choose a virtual care visit over a medical office or healthcare setting. Telemedicine reduces healthcare service costs for New Canaan residents, especially those living on a fixed income. Telemedicine reduces unnecessary non-urgent emergency room visits and eliminates expensive emergent transportation expenses. Telemedicine can effectively monitor and diagnose long COVID symptoms as well as other health chronic comorbidities such as congestive heart failure, high blood pressure, stroke risk, and other respiratory and circulatory issues. In the appendix, you'll see some New Canaan actual data from March of two thousand twenty to March twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-two. Certainly, while the most vulnerable residents during the first wave of the pandemic were New Canaan senior population, that quickly changed to include other age cohorts during the second and subsequent waves. One thousand three hundred and fifty-one New Canaan residents between the age of forty and seventy and seventy-nine were confirmed to have been stricken with the SARS virus. And of March twenty-fourth, almost one in five New Canaan residents had reported testing positive. Most research indicates that with approximately forty percent of infected residents being asymptomatic and not testing, this number is certainly underreported. Why does this matter? COVID nineteen is a multi-system disease, and long COVID or post-COVID effects tend to thirty percent of those afflicted twelve weeks or longer after their initial acute infection period. That equates to roughly one hundred and thirty-five to four hundred and five New Canaan residents who will or currently have system issues relating to the infection. This number will undoubtedly continue to grow as each wave emerges. Slide four, please. Why expand on an independent nonprofit, non-discriminatory health and wellness provider located actually in New Canaan? Well, I'm hopeful that this is a rhetorical question. Wavney Life Care is a preferred provider for all the major acute care providers in our region. While New Canaan residents utilize all of these providers in our region, similar to any healthcare information exchange, once the client assigns a physician or specialist, that information will be HIPAA compliant and only accessible to the provider assigned by the compliant by the applicant. Slide five. Every resident in New Canaan may opt in to telemedicine. There may they may choose to because of pre-existing conditions, the special needs of a child, or existing patients and senior residents being cared for in our town. And as then as Andrew and I have discussed on many occasions, it has the ability to add additional providers related to behavioral health issues to assist in the differentiation of anxiety and stress with other medical anomalies. Slide six, please. With this New Canaan specific backdrop, what would be a conservative demand analysis in year one? Assuming a twenty percent capture rate for long COVID residents, it equates up to eighty-one enrollees. New Canaan also has a significant senior population and a growing fifty-five and older constituency, extrapolating extrapolating two or more chronic ailments and comorbidities as another three hundred and sixty-nine clientele. Telemedicine has been proven to assist in the care management of special needs children and New Canaan residents who have recently been discharged home, thereby preventing unnecessary hospital readmissions. Slide seven. An investment in telemedicine today will give New Canaan a tremendous advantage in managing any future public health crisis by providing a daily tracking and disease management program with a proven record to enhance timeliness and quality of care. Slide eight. This shows the actual at-home device that is wireless and may be used through your cell provider or internet. Wavney System has been named the best remote patient monitoring system for three consecutive years, reflective of its open architecture and ability to transition as newly created diagnostic tools are developed. Next slide, please. The request for funds pay for capital investments in year one. The model becomes virtually financially self-sufficient in years two and beyond, so it truly is a seed capital investment that will continue to reap community health benefits for year to come. This is a true public-private partnership. Next slide. If the request for funds is approved today, Wavney Life Care Network has committed to matching the town of New Canaan's ARPA allocation. Next slide. The combined funds will operationalize the expansion of the program to include the required staff to install the and monitor the system and each device. Next slide. As the program hits a critical mass, units will begin reaching levels of payer reimbursement necessary to support the operations in years two and beyond. Slide thirteen. The well-publicized Connecticut Plan and American Rescue Plan Act acknowledges that the pandemic has had a disproportionate impact on Connecticut Connecticut's most vulnerable residents, and priority should be given to improving the speed and quality with which we can monitor and analyze public health risk and respond to them. The average New Canaan resident probably sees a physician two to four times per year for fifteen to twenty minutes each visit. Telemedicine has the capability to see a New Canaan resident the other three hundred and sixty days per year to monitor changes in behavior as well as health risk. Slide fourteen. In conclusion, telemedicine meets several priority consideration criteria established for ARPA funding. The applicant has a history of providing high-quality, five-star-rated care, which also includes telemedicine. Telemedicine has been proven to provide excellent quality and timely care and monitoring, thereby preventing unnecessary emergency room visits and hospitalization. New Canaan has a significant and growing population over the age of fifty-five with varying degrees of health risk. The program is cost-effective and sustainable after the initial seed funding and scalable based upon growing demand. And lastly, insurance-based surveys reflect an increased acceptance and preference for telehealth. We thank you again for the opportunity presented to you today, and I'm happy to answer or address any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. You you presented it well. Obviously, ARPA funds, health services are one of the main focuses, and so I think this is an easy one for us to. It took me about two months to understand where we're going with waving telemedicine. But it's obviously the wave of the future because it's you really have to find efficiencies in delivering healthcare to people at home. It's another reason why we need cell service all over town, because those seniors that don't have Wi-Fi need four G connectivity to their devices.
I love how we get cellphone service in. We're talking about telehealth.
Seriously. And you know, the benefit here, I didn't realize is that, you know, the idea of having been in a system and having all your medical information there is very important when ambulances come and bring you to either Stanford or Norwalk Hospital, and they know what your history, they know what medicine you're on. So this is a huge thing for seniors in town, and I really, I really support the idea that we can take a leap forward here with expanding Wavney's reach, which between home health service and visiting nurses, that it's a very important service in town. So doctor almost doctor.
General.
Doctor Barkstall, thank you for your presentation. You have any questions?
No, I I mean, I agree with you. So so New Canaan as a town has been a leader in telehealth from day one. How do you see this? I mean, we've got a a tell H H S has a telehealth.
That was more tell 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 wellness, you know.
Telewellness.
Did a huge job.
Right.
You know, getting us into the wellness program, but but this is really medicine. This is delivery of healthcare services.
This delivery and diagnostics. So I'll just one brief example for congestive heart failure, where you have to monitor weight gain. You just have to step on the scale first thing in the morning, the same time every morning, and it does it automatically. We screen your and there's backside screening looking for changes in blood pressure. For example, if you have set limits, your doctor says these are normal limits for you, then anything outside those normal limits that we notify your physician.
Yeah, especially post-post-operative care, you know, now they send you home two days after something you used to be in the hospital for a week, and you need monitoring after that, and you know, so the the opportunities here are very.
And and to the extent we can keep people out of hospitals or emergency rooms or you know, any, you know, just
Highly infected area.
Yeah, sure. So talk to me about self-sufficiency. So this is this, this is, this will be a staple to get us to self-sufficiency.
Right.
Explain how it's self-sufficiency.
Sure. Once you get to a to a critical mass where the nurse practitioner would be actually the person that would be billing instead of the physician, that's where the Medicare revenue and is a part B. That's where the revenue comes in, then offsets the cost. It won't be a hundred percent. We'll always rely on some grant funding to assist us, but we've been very successful in supporting the program.
And that will come from the town or come from Wavney?
That comes from us. We we go to technology companies and ask for grants, and and we've been very successful in receiving those grants.
So this is a one-time eight hundred thousand.
This is a one time to get us to get the technology back platform set up in order to take on the additional patients.
I mean, I can't think of a better use of funding than health.
Yep.
I mean. Coming through, we're still in, as I understand it, we you know better than than I do, Russ, but you know, we've got Corona coming back. So a friend of mine I was talking to the other day said seven, eight friends of his from church all have gotten COVID in the last week, so it's it's still here.
The, yes, the next wave is expected the end of end of April to peak, and now you're seeing people that have been infected multiple times as well.
So with that, I would move that we approve a recommendation to the Board of Finance and then to the Town Council of four hundred thousand dollars for this initiative to expand telemedicine at Wavney as Russ presented. Do I have a second?
Second here.
For the discussion. All favor. Okay, Russ, thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Now, Dr. Andrew Gerber from Silver Hill Hospital.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for having me here today.
Resident of Weston, but you've been here four years, three or four years now?
I've been here three and a half years, and my name's Andrew Gerber. I'm the President Medical Director of Silver Hill Hospital, just a Valley Road. And though I I may not be a resident of the town, I I see myself as a a someone who runs a business in this town, employs a lot of folks and cares for a lot of New Canaan residents. So it's it's really a pleasure to be here on their behalf, on Silver Hill's behalf, and talk to you about a proposal that I really identify as something that we jointly created over the last few months as a way really to give back to the town and to fulfill our responsibility as being a a part of a residential community. We've been here since nineteen thirty-one. We care at any given moment for about two hundred patients. Bulk of them does come from Fairfield County, although we spread out much more broadly than that. And we're a national leader in providing mental health care, particularly for folks with complex and difficult-to-treat illnesses. So it's so under under that, hospices, we drafted this proposal as a way to really give back to the town at a time of great need. So if we could go to the next slide. Okay, so I want to start by talking a little bit about the need for the service that I'm about to present and then talk about what the practical nature of the program would be, and then really invite your questions about what we're doing. If we can go to the next slide, please. So so unfortunately, in my business, this this slide has become all too familiar for us. This particular set of information comes from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, but you can find statistics to this degree from almost any resource these days. Mental health has really emerged as one of the great crises facing not just our nation, our world, but our towns. It does not discriminate in any way. It affects everyone. It has been a subject that tragically has been under discussed due to due to a range of stigma and stereotypes that affect our ability to think and talk about this this crisis. The the conventional number that that's out there that this slide shows is that one in one year, one out of five Americans has a diagnosable psychiatric condition. But the truth is that when you add that up over time and knowing that there is a somewhat chronic nature to these illnesses, that doesn't mean it's always in its acute phase, but it means that even if you don't meet criteria this year, but you did last year, you're going to be affected in various ways, affected at home and your family, at your workplace, in school, affects how you interact with other people. What it means is that virtually every family has bearing some effect of mental illness. We don't talk about it necessarily, although I applaud those who are now speaking more openly, particularly in the public sphere about these illnesses. But we can all think of those members of our family or close friends who have been affected one way or another by by various forms of mental illness. Next slide, please. COVID has just made things worse. It's 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 become almost tried to say this, but we live in a time now where the number of stressors keeps increasing. And COVID in particular, whether one has affected oneself, whether one is has a family member who's affected or simply because of the effects of COVID on the workplace and the educational environment and the general effects in society, we are seeing drastic increases in the rates of mental illness again across the demographics. And conservative estimates have this increasing by a factor of of four or five times the number of people who who are affected by mental illness. We don't fully have the numbers because it's it's recent, but the articles are starting to come out in the scholarly journals, like the one I'm showing up here to 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 suggest that mental illness is only getting worse. And unfortunately, we don't expect those numbers to come down anytime soon. Because as we all know, the effects of COVID and how it's it's entered our lives don't go away immediately. When the numbers come down, they they last. And families that have had to change their plans and had to really change the way they work with one another in negative ways are all around us. Next slide, please. So what about our current system? Here again, there's a very sad note that that we have lived for a number of years with a mental health system in this country that is barely adequate to take care of the problems we already have. This is worse for individuals who can't afford to pay privately, but even for individuals who are fortunate enough to be able to pay out of pocket, the accessibility of mental health care has been, sorry, I'm having a little trouble seeing it because of the reflection, has been tragically low. A lot of what people find, and I imagine there are people in this room who've experienced this, I know I have, is the fragmentation of the system. If you need any particular kind of care, you you have to almost be an expert in the system to know where to look. And so I can't tell you how many times a week I get a phone call from someone who is a leader in their own field. Someone who's obviously got enormous qualifications in one way, who says, I can't make heads or tails out of the question of where to go. I tried calling a couple of people, they're all full. I tried going to a website, I can't tell one place from another. Places that are superficial and maybe advertising something that they don't actually do versus places that are national leaders, you can't tell that on the surface. And so people almost have to become full-time experts. I know many, many family members who, of people who are affected by illness, who spend hours and hours a day learning about these things and ultimately have to come to people like me to understand the system. To make matters worse, it's constantly changing. And so the amount of, of time and resource it takes to figure out where to go when you have a crisis is great. On top of all that, the availability of services is limited. And it's a regular occurrence that we get a call from a, someone from the school system, from somebody and one other, and Russ and I work closely on this when it comes to, to the elderly population. And they don't have a place to send their loved one, their patient, the person that they're concerned about. We've now worked consistently with the town and with Bethany and with others to, in urgent situations like this. You really need to be an expert in order to know what the services are like. I have a picture up there which some may recognize from The Rhyme of the Ancient Mariner by Samuel Coleridge. And that famous quote about water, water everywhere, nor any drop to drink. And I use that to reference the fact that many people have said, and you may be thinking right now, but don't we live in a town with great resources? Don't we live in a town with 70-plus therapists? Yes. With agencies, with various organizations that are devoted to this? The answer to all that is yes. We're fortunate. Yet it is not glued together in a coherent way, not for lack of trying. But because the entry point into the system, that is, in the moment that somebody has a crisis but doesn't understandably want to go to the emergency room at Norwalk or Stanford, they have no place to go. And they need to wait days, weeks, or even months if they, if they need to get an appointment at the proper location. So this is really the origin of the idea that we are proposing today. Next slide. We need urgent assessments. We need a place to be able to send residents of New Canaan when they need an assessment. I'm not talking about a medically acute crisis when, yes, they'll still have to go to Norwalk or Stanford ER. But the bulk of these referrals are individuals, often students in the schools or children, adolescents, young adults, the elderly. These are the populations that are most affected. There, there are adults as well in this population who we have a window. They've said to somebody, I know I have a problem and I need to go get help. I'm feeling suicidal right now. Not at the level, I'm going to do something this moment, I have to go to the emergency room, but I want to talk to somebody. And the answer all too frequently now is, there's nowhere to go. I'll call around tomorrow and maybe I'll get you an appointment in a few weeks. We need a place for them to go, and that needs to be a place that is responsive, that has the full set of services that, that can be offered to that individual. And that is then going to plug them into the system that they can then get their care in a continuous way. These services do exist in other areas of the country. We do not yet have one locally here. And, and in discussion with the town and with others locally, we urgently need this. Next slide. What this would actually look like in real terms would be creating a service that is able to, in most cases, schedule an appointment in person within 24 hours and at the latest 48 hours to get the person in, in person. As much as telemedicine is absolutely the future, and I love, I love what Russ and Ravini are doing in this regard. There is still a role for in-person assessments. And the first assessment, particularly of an individual in crisis, the standard of care is still to do that in person. We would start it on the phone. And then, and that service would be available 12 hours a day, six days a week to answer those calls. And then we would get them in to Silver Hill, right in our community here, to do an in-person confidential assessment within 48 hours. We would do it comprehensively, so I'm not talking about a 15-minute visit here. I'm talking about a three-hour assessment. Mental health and addiction issues are complex. I don't have to tell you that you need the time to talk about what's going on, whether it's the family, whether it's a spouse. But as a psychiatrist, as a therapist, as a social worker, you need the time to dig in and make a plan. So the three hours is set up to give a full hour to the psychiatrist. We have a wonderful trained staff of 19 psychiatrists who are busy but who would love to be able to, to work with the residents of this town in this way. We have the APRNs to do medical evaluations, and we have the social workers to collect the information needed to make an effective plan. Because at the end of the day, the assessment is only as valuable as the plan that we create. So that social worker would create the plan and then work with the town authorities and the other agencies to make sure that the patient can follow through. In order to do this, we do need the collaboration of, of a wide group of people. This, to, to, to go back to the Coleridge poem, we need to engage all these other services. Therefore, there would be weekly and monthly meetings that we would organize and work together as a team, even though this would be located on the Silver Hill campus. The goal is really to make this a collaborative town effort. Last but not least, I wish I could tell you that all of this would be paid for by insurance. But in fact, the way our mental health reimbursement system is set up in this country, even in privileged communities like New Canaan, we know from the data that only about 30% of that is going to get reimbursed. Insurance companies don't fully reimburse urgent assessments, as crazy as that sounds. And then the copays as well as the, the deductibles add into that as well. Now, you might say that many, if not most of our, our town members could afford to pay that. And that may be true, although I, I think we'd have to look at the numbers. But what I will tell you from experience is that those fees deter people from getting the help they need. It's one of the key reasons people say, well, I don't want to go to get an assessment because I know how much the copay will be. I know how much the deductible is. And by the way, I don't want to have to make all the phone calls it's going to take to my insurance. We would take those barriers away by making this no cost to New Canaan residents. And that really would make us immediately one of the leaders in the country at creating accessibility for this service. Next slide. We have many partners. I, I'm not going to read all of these, but these are all groups that we have spoken with. And I've been really grateful for the support and, and for the consultation that we've already received. All representatives of all these groups would be in the steering group. And so we would make sure that no agency is not represented and part of the solution. We're not trying to solve this all by ourselves. We're trying to, to, to really lead or co-lead even with, with the Department of Health and Human Services, which I think has done a wonderful job with, with the resources they've had so far to build this for the future. Next slide. Our budget, and I'm not going to read all, all the numbers, but this is something that we worked out in collaboration with the town over the last few months, just what is feasible is to roughly be able to provide five assessments per week. Now, one might say, how do we know how many people from New Canaan are going to take advantage of this? And the, and the short answer is, we don't know yet. We need to collect data. However, what we see this is as a pilot that then can grow and include other towns. They need to contribute their pieces as well. And we, we want to move ahead as leaders in this even before they've devoted their funds. But this would be a base. If we went below the, the five per week, my fear is we wouldn't have enough availability to make it accessible. Soon as you're telling people you got to wait three, four, five days, now we're going to lose the moment. We're going to, we're going to lose the goal of the assessment. If we tell people, and we believe we can do that, that you've got an appointment within two days, ideally one day, I believe we can capture the folks who need this service the most. This budget includes efficiencies that can only come because we have an existing hospital. We're not adding brand-new staff. We're taking a piece of existing staff and focusing them, making them available for this so that we can essentially share with the rest of our, our operation. The larger this gets, the more economies of scale, so the, the actual rate per assessment can go down. But the rate that's estimated here on the order of, of $1,200, $1,300 an assessment, it's actually quite reasonable for, for what is out there. But we could get that down to 1,000 or even less if we're able to expand this over time. The overhead is minimal and really just, just accounts for some of the space that we need to devote, some of the oversight. But really, the effort is focused on, on paying the direct care individuals who would be doing the assessments and then following up with, with the patients who are assessed. Next slide. Last but not least, I just want to reassure everybody that we at Silver Hill, and I know Russ is as well, are big believers in collecting data. The only way to, to provide effective programs is to iterate. That is to start, collect the data, and to change in response to demand. So we would be collecting data on how quickly we're responding to people, who we're, we're treating, what illnesses we're treating, what their follow-up looks like. This, these are all standard metrics in the field, and we would very quickly know if we're being responsive or not. We are also going to have to advertise. We're going to have to let the residents of the town know. We would do that in collaboration with the Community Fund as well as, as the, the town government and, and Health and Human Services. And make sure that we're reaching the people we need to reach. We would then make whatever modifications. This is an ongoing project, and we are asking for, for assistance in getting it off the ground. It will not sustain itself purely on the insurance because insurance just doesn't pay enough. But what it means is we can then use our data to come back to the Community Foundation and work with other philanthropic foundations and efforts to make sure that this can be sustained. If we do this, I believe we can quickly be leaders in the country and a model for how to provide urgent care assessments for our citizens. Next slide. That concludes what I wanted to say, and I look forward to any discussion and questions.
Very good presentation. So let me just give you a couple of the background facts. One, this, the idea for this actually is almost three years old. Paul Reinhardt and I met and said, we really need an urgent care thing because Paul is a such great service to the town, focusing particularly on substance abuse and, and kids at risk. And, but the idea was to, to develop a fund of the Community Foundation that would support this so that people in need in New Canaan can have immediate access to that assessment, which, because it's very confusing as to who, what provider you need for a particular situation. We invited Darian and Wilton and Ridgefield to join us in this. We are prepared to go alone. The ARPA funds gave us the opportunity to, to launch this with Silver Hill Hospital. I think Darian, Darian has indicated they, they're probably in. Ridgefield is interested. Wilson, at least the superintendent of schools is in, I think, so that this, this, you know, we've been debating, how do you, how do you meet five assessments a week in terms of capacity? There clearly is a critical mass. We need to make this financially successful. But the idea would be a year, two years. This is really providing funds for the first two years, but we would look to work with the Community Foundation to create a, a fund that would continue this from McCann's point of view. Hopefully, the other towns would do likewise, and we would also perhaps participate to some extent with taxpayer dollars to a limited extent. But the idea here is to launch this and, and make it work and, and then figure out the economics as we go. So questions for Andrew? Oh, yes. Lauren, thank you for joining us.
We should be a leader in this, in this field, and I'm completely supportive. You know, we're lucky as a town that we have Waviney
Absolutely.
and Silver Hill, which in their fields are, you know, at the top. Health, behavioral health assessment. I, I just can't imagine a more difficult situation than we have in this country and certainly in New Canaan. And we have, we, you know, there's been some developments, unfortunately, tragically in, in Darian in the last week that a lot of us are aware of. This is urgently needed. I'm completely supportive. And I, Kevin, I'm, I'm glad to hear that other towns are looking to partner with us to, to support this.
Kathleen. Yes, thank you. I echo Nick's and Kevin's comments. Andrew, just a quick question, and I know you said the KPIs are going to be, you know, assuming possibly five people per week. What if the number is double that? When can you start advertising, et cetera?
It's a great, it's a great question. We, as a hospital, do have the capacity to flex up. Of course, it, it will incur costs as well because we'll have to move folks over from other. And if the need is there, my hope is we can appeal to both neighboring towns as well as other philanthropic efforts within the New Canaan community to expand what we're doing. It's hard to know, right? I mean, this was a debate we had when we were doing the planning about exactly what the volume is going to look like. I think the prudent thing might be to, to start and, and not rev up the advertising right away to see what's coming in, and then to titrate it up and, and look at the flow as best as possible. But, you know, of course, where, from where I sit, I hear about these issues so frequently that I worry about the same problem as you're worrying about. But I understand that, that, you know, that, that we don't know yet how many folks will come in.
So would we circumscribe the advertising to New Canaan initially?
That's right.
And if Darian comes on board or Wilton, you know, we would expand that.
Another interesting model that we discussed is, so for a variety of reasons, we can't turn somebody away who's not from our town. However, what we can do, and this was checked with our attorneys as well as with insurance consultants, what we can do is say that there is a list price. And that if you are from the town of New Canaan, a grant from the town of New Haven, Canaan covers any out-of-pocket expenses completely. You know, on the up and up to do that. But we could serve someone from another, from another town, and they could pay full price. And I've been told by some people that you're going to get people from other towns and they're going to pay the $1,200, $1,300 out of pocket. If that's the case, that will in part subsidize what we're doing. We can't count on it yet. And frankly, I'd prefer not to have to charge people, and if, if Darian and Ridgefield and Wilton kick in, that's even better. But I think, I think we have options if we need to scale up.
That's a great idea.
Any further questions, Kathleen?
That's one further question. So the, the 250 that's being requested for the ARPA funds, you think that's going to handle about two years' worth of this program? Is that right?
Hopefully with another partner talent, at least Darian, if we, if we can get Ridgefield in as well and Wilton, so, so much the better. Even if they don't participate with, as, as Andrew said, if they're participating on a per-case basis as opposed to ARPA funds, but they all have our funds. Some have committed their funds to some extent, but I think Darian is probably in as a partner, so.
I mean, tragically, as, as, as Slockman Williams mentioned, in Darian, I think they, they have learned all too recently. The tragedy can strike at any time, and, and that then has effects on many other individuals in the community who, who need help.
So with that, I move, we approve this recommendation to the Board of Finance and then the Town Council of a allocation of $250,000 of ARPA funds for the Silver Hill Hospital Behavioral Health Assessment Service as described by Andrew. And do I have a second? Kathleen, Kathleen seconds for the discussion. All favor. Thank you, Dr. Gerber.
Very much.
Russ, this is very, very good thing we're going to do. Okay.
This is ARPA spending at its, at its best.
Okay, now we have some more mundane matters, but nuts and bolts of our town. Caving rose and.
Nothing wrong with a little glue and tape.
Caving rose is important.
Good morning. I have an item up here for the boiler project for the emergency service building, the ambulance corps building. Currently, there's no boilers in that building. The heat is borrowed from the police department. And we want to sever that relationship. As you know, going forward, we'd be doing police department work and it's time to have their own heating system in, within that building. We went out to bid, received two bids, a little bid being with Eastern Mechanical. Part of the approval process here, looking for is SNE Bone System, who currently has the building management system already, has to do some upgrades to sever the relationship with the police department and to put us on their newer platform. Their infrastructure is mostly there, so we'd like to also get approval to contract with SNE Bone Systems.
Questions? Again.
Phil, just one on that, and it is a new installation, not a replacement, so thank you for that. And, and is, what other issues would we have to deal with for the EMS building that enables them to really have their own standalone services? Does this handle everything or what's remaining in terms of getting EMS to be a standalone operating building?
Right. So we would have, they share the generator with the police department currently. We'd be looking to put their own generator there or work out something for emergency backup power. Their network, I believe, goes through the police department too. I think we already discussed that part of the police department project to.
The communications would continue in the roof of, in the, in the attic. The communications would continue in the roof of, in the, in the attic of the police department regardless of what happens.
Yeah, so, but that's about it. I think the only major one would be really the generator and sharing electricity. We have to come up with a plan for that.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, so the network?
The, the, there's antennas on the police department for the, for the fire, police EMS, and perhaps.
And your phone systems and computer. But if we, and we'll get to, where are we going to put the police?
We're going to vacate the building, but the telecommunications will continue in the, in the, okay. The building will have power.
So we are going to keep the police department at South Avenue, right?
Certainly. We'll talk about that. We'll talk about that later in the agenda.
That's great.
Anyway, we're approving a standalone heating system for the HBA system for the, which we actually had planned.
Yeah, we.
Apart from the police department.
We should have always had us, had, you know, separate.
The availability of gas makes it feasible, and and this is a good long term plan. Any questions, Kathleen?
For the questions?
I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into contracts with Eastern Mechanical Services to install a new boiler system and with S and E Building Systems to upgrade the building management system for a total of one hundred fifty seven thousand dollars, ten dollars, as set forth on our tablets and as described by Bill.
Second here.
Second, further discussion?
None here.
All favor? Hi?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Tiger has three items here, four items. Six items.
Just a couple, yeah. So, good morning.
Our biggest spender here.
I don't know if I like that, but that's okay.
Yeah.
So this is, this contract before you is for pave twenty twenty two local roads project. We went out to bid, we received two bids. FGB Construction, Endearing Construction, FGB being the lowest at eight hundred and forty eight thousand, four hundred and seventy eight dollars. We added a fifteen percent contingency of one hundred and twenty seven thousand for a total of nine, seven, five, four, seven, eight. So I, this takes in approximately about ten roads in town. And of note, we are on our last twenty segments of road to be completed before we're done with everything in its entirety when we started in two thousand and four. The goal was to finish in two thousand and twenty four. We're a little bit ahead of schedule. The, this year will take care of eleven of those final segments, leaving nine remaining. And those nine remaining ones all have work planned either with ever source gas, installing gas lines or quarrying, putting in water lines, or the library work out in front of Maple Street. So other than that, I would consider ourselves to be complete because without these other products sitting on top of them, we would have done these this year and been done. So, so we're kind of excited about that milestone or reaching that milestone. Sort of like painting the Brooklyn Bridge. Unfortunately, we'll have to start over again, but the, we'd like to go forward with this contract with FGB for eight, forty eight, four, seventy eight and a contingency of one hundred and twenty seven thousand.
Does this include the current cost of asphalt? Where is that?
Excellent, free, I forgot to bring that up. So asphalt went up, now we're, this, this bid was at a hundred and six dollars and sixty nine cents a ton. Last year, we were at ninety two and ninety eight. So now we're looking at about seven dollars more per ton. The other low bidder, the other bidder at during was a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. So we're, we are seeing an increase, and we're seeing an increase, a slight increase in every other number as well, but a lot less. This is strictly due to material cost itself.
Have you got a list of the roads?
List of the roads, I can give you that, yeah. The, so it's Brooks Road, Cherry Street from East Avenue to Main Street, Cross Street, Ferris Hill, Mead Street, Soundview Lane, South Avenue from Elm to Cherry, that's the section we own, and VD Street. And then Brinkhoff, Mortimer, and Lockwood will be done as well this year now that the water line is done, but that was on a previous contract. And then the only other one that we're looking to do is Millport Avenue, the stretch from Lakeview to Main Street. We're finalizing the plans there since we have to upgrade the sidewalks.
Do we have a list online, excuse me, with respect to the the paving projects? So the residents can say, okay, like, I live on Soundview here or there.
We published that back in two thousand and four, and it didn't work out well. So the, the thought was that if a resident has a question as to where they are, we can tell them our five year and ten year plan. It can tell them exactly where they are, and then we'll go back out and reevaluate.
What didn't work, what didn't work in two?
Once we decided to try to change and move, if we needed to add a road, not add or remove a road or push a road a year, then the the pushback was substantial at that time. So it, it decreased our flexibility. So I can tell them exactly where we think we are and then say, we'll go out, go back out and reevaluate. And if we change our mind on that road, then we'll let them know. If not, it'll stay in its current plan.
And is that, is it the decisions with respect to which roads? Is it purely PCI?
PCI is what is the largest driving factor, yes. The, because that gives us its condition, average daily traffic matters, safety concerns, other, other work that might have happened on that road. But yes, PCI is the, is the, the major driving factor.
Okay, thank you.
How much of this particular contract is going to be reimbursed by ever source gas?
This is all us. There'll be a second contract coming out for ever source gas itself. These roads were all roads that we were responsible for as part of the MOU.
So when are we going to see that one?
That's with their finalizing, there was a slew of, call before he digs, that came in for gas hookups based upon how oil started spiking. So we're waiting for those services to come in because they were all on the roads that we were targeting, waiting for those services to be installed, and then we'll come out. So we'll be looking at this, the ever source bid coming out in another couple of weeks, four weeks for, in the summer and fall.
Those are mainly the streets off South Avenue?
So, yes, exactly. South Avenue from Farm to Oak, both sides of the street. Some of these are in here, Brooks Road, but Brooks Road was our responsibility. Mead Street was our responsibility since it had never been paved prior. So that's why those run on this, this contract.
Kathleen, any questions?
Yeah, just, just a quick one, Tiger. So you mentioned we started this in two thousand and four, it's like painting the Brooklyn Bridge, we're going to start all over again. So just remind us, is it, there a ten year plan already put forward for sort of the next paving program?
Correct, so the, the, the driver is every five years we touch the road. So we'll pave any of these roads that are paved now in two thousand and twenty two and two thousand and twenty seven, we'll crack seal it. And then in two thousand and thirty two, we'll look to put a micro thin overlay over it. In two thousand and thirty seven, we'll look to crack seal it again, and then two thousand and forty two, we'll look to either put a cape seal on or another, or a mill and pave at that point in time. So we have a, where we'll be coming out to every road every five years. That's why it's, it's easy to tell you exactly where we will be. Now that we've brought them all up, now we've got to keep them, keep them all active and and stay with the maintenance so that they stay at a higher, higher level, which is also less expensive for us in the end. Instead of allowing it to fail, not doing any work for twenty years and then rebuilding the entire road. So yes, that's how I can tell you, I know exactly what we plan to do in the next five and ten years out, just by based, looking at what we had done prior.
So it's an ongoing program rather than having to put together another ten year program like you started off in two thousand and four?
Correct, right. Yeah, the moment we started picking up, it, we, we had basically two plans working. One was to bring everything up, and then the other one was to keep everything up. So now we're in sync completely across the board where, once we're done with this, every road will be elevated, and then we'll be able to maintain them at a higher level.
All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
No further questions? So I call this mundane, but it's really quite exciting to be repaving roads.
For the people that are on it?
Absolutely.
It's, it's one of the essential
services.
Services that that we provide. I mean, you can't get more critical than roads and sidewalks.
So I move that we approve this request from Public Works to enter into contract with FGB Construction for a total of nine hundred seventy five thousand, four, seventy eight for the milling, reclaiming, and repaving of the roads as Tiger described. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All favor?
Thank you.
Guide rails, guide rails.
So the next is a guide rails on Cascade Road. We had an accident on Cascade Road, and when we looked at it, there's a severe drop off. And the only thing that stopped the car from going over the edge was one boulder and a fence line, basically a chain link fence. This is as you head off Ponus Ridge down the hill towards Stanford. So all on our side, but on the left hand side of the road as you're looking, as you're driving out of town. So on the, the south and western side of the road as you're driving into Stanford. So we asked for a quote from Atlas Companies, they're underneath the state contract. They came back with a quote of thirty five thousand, twenty five dollars, plus we added a contingency of five thousand, two hundred and fifty for a total of forty thousand, two seventy five, and this to install a weathering steel guide rail, which is the core ten, which is the rusted rail. So it's a lot better than the shiny metal galvanized W rail around this curve and down to the bottom to protect this, to protect this drop off. It's a steep hill, it's a steep embankment, and it probably should have been done in the past.
Why don't you do Lapham guide rails at the same time?
Okay, so Lapham is a replacement of existing metal beam rails with Merritt Parkway steel backed rail, so the wooden rail. We're looking at doing at at present just the northern side. The northern side is the, at the Lapham Trailside entrance, and then we'll look to expand going down on the southern side as well. That'll be a future contract. These rails are nearing the end of their useful life. They're the W rail, galvanized rail, we're looking to put in the the Merritt Parkway, considering the fact of where it is directly adjacent to Waveney. And again, we went to Atlas, they own the state contract for this. They came forward with a cost, excuse me, of twenty one thousand, seven sixty eight. We added a contingency of three thousand, two hundred and fifty for a total of twenty five thousand and eighteen dollars. So if you, we'd like the approval for both those monies are available. We'd like to go forward with those, both those projects.
Questions?
None here.
Tiger, can you remind us, what's the twenty twenty two and then even going forward, guide rail budget each year?
We have fifty thousand dollars in the budget each year, so it was fifty thousand and twenty two, and there'll be fifty, there's fifty thousand slated in twenty twenty three pending approval. So there's a, we're slightly over here, so we'll be taking the remaining out of our road paving budget, which is an allowable expense.
How many more guardrails do you anticipate that we still have to either replace or put in new?
Quite a few. We have, there's, I think the, the program has at least two years left in it, possibly three. Going forward, I know we have areas on Gertie's Road at, at White Oak Shade. I've got the other extension, the other work at Dunning Road that we did one side of the street. We've got to do the other areas on Marvin Ridge, the other area at Lapham, and then a couple of other locations as well. So we've got quite a few, but we're, we've been knocking them down as they go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move, approve the request from Public Works for the, both the Cascade Road and the Lapham Road guide rails as Tiger described, forty thousand, two seventy five for Cascade and twenty five thousand, oh eighteen for Lapham. Second?
Second?
For the discussion? All favor? I? Thank you, Tiger.
Thanks.
Phil's coming back up.
Morning again. We're just looking for approval as required by our purchase policy to increase the PO for our cleaning services. The Waveney House and Vine Cottage were added locations. Originally, they were covered with some of the COVID expenses, but then they denied it from FEMA. So we were instructed back with Luna to put them against our operating. We want to continue these services. We secured the funding for it, so we're just asking to approve the PO.
So what did we do before COVID?
We didn't do these locations. My cottage wasn't in service. We had moved the health department over there.
Right.
And we were cleaning the building under the COVID guidelines, basically, and, and yet FEMA would not reimburse.
Yeah, what about Waveney?
Waveney was at it. I guess there were some issues there with the bathrooms, mostly that's all we cleaned up, there's the bathrooms. And we do was touch point cleaning at one point because of the COVID. And it was decided that it was working really well for our clinic to clean all the bathrooms up there, so we're continuing that service.
We wanted to be consistent across all buildings. At Waveney was the maintenance man there was taking care of everything, but we wanted to be consistent across, especially since we have staff and visitors, we want to be consistent across the board to all properties. That's why we added it to the cleaning, that was contract, so that the cleaning would be consistent across, wherever building we owned, cleaning would be consistent. Is some of this money retrospective to what FEMA didn't reimburse?
Well, FEMA won't reimburse any of the cleaning of buildings.
Going forward.
Going forward, they're not going to.
Are we, anyway, let's just.
No, I, I get your question.
Are we paying for money?
We're paying for money, we didn't, we spent, and thought we would get FEMA reimbursement, but didn't. I think that's his question. Yes, which, so, yes, yes.
So we're authorizing money, services, the Waveney House and Vine Cottage. Any further questions, Kathleen or Nick?
Not here, thank you.
None here.
Okay, I move, we approve this request from Public Works to increase the existing purchase order with Jan Pro Cleaning Services that Bill described for twenty one thousand dollars for Waveney House and Vine Cottage. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion, all in favor?
I, thank you.
Thank you. Sidewalks, Tiger.
All right, yeah. This next one is sidewalks on Farm Road from Main Street to South Avenue. They, over the winter, they, they started to literally come apart down at the bottom of the, down at the bottom of the hill. So we went out to bid, we received two bids. Peter Lonnie Incorporated was the low bid at a hundred and fifty eight thousand, nine hundred. We added a contingency of twenty three thousand, five hundred for a total of a hundred and eighty two thousand, four hundred dollars. The funds are available on our sidewalk account. And his numbers are consistent from last year, so there wasn't much, or there wasn't an increase at all from last year's numbers to this year's numbers for, for his bidding.
And this must be important for the kids walking to schools.
This is correct.
I think I brought this up some months ago, having taken a walk with my wife, Whitney, and our dog Sailor doing a loop down south and back up Maine, and I mean, it's a disaster.
This one's sorely needed.
Yeah, yeah, so this is, this is money well spent, I think.
Question, Kathleen?
It's just actually a comment from a constituent. You know, for public safety reasons, obviously, we all applaud and are grateful for the crossing guard that we, guards that we have on South Avenue. However, I think the part of that sidewalk on Farm Road or just something off of the sidewalk is for the crossing guard to park, obviously. But sometimes that truck or car could actually be adjacent or on the sidewalk, forcing pedestrians to kind of go off the sidewalk to go around. And so maybe if we can just, Tiger, you and I talked about this already, but if we can just assure that the crossing guard has a proper place to park, so it's, it's not over the sidewalk, that would be great.
We can do that. We, we, we created an area for him to pull off, and we try to maintain that for him, especially during inclement weather. But sometimes he forgets and parks over the top of the sidewalk.
Is that on us or the Board of Ed?
The crossing guard is run through the police department.
PD.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll speak to the deputy chief about that and see if we can't remind him to. And then when we come forward, we'll be redoing that portion of sidewalk, and then we'll try to make it even a more inviting place for him to park. How's that? So he'll park off the side.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Get our daffodils back. Did we get our daffodils?
Yeah, yeah, they replanted them, yeah, they're coming back. So the last year, actually, that we called the showcase, it looked pretty nice last year.
Ever Source, actually, Burns or the other guys that destroyed them, so.
It was the other guys.
Other guys, yeah. Okay. I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into counter appeal on it, for the basement of the sidewalks and ramps at Farm Road from Main to South Avenue as described by Tiger for a total of one hundred eighty thousand, four hundred dollars. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Further discussion?
You're all favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm a little jilted. Okay, Tiger, thank you.
Good morning.
I don't know why I'm rushing. I feel like I'm rushed. I feel like I'm rushed this morning.
It's a big agenda.
Master municipal agreement to perform rights of way tasks.
Yes. Morning, so the Department of Public Works is requesting authorization to enter into a municipal master agreement with the Connecticut DOT to perform the rights of way task for the Ponus Bridge project. I'll give you a quick update. We haven't talked about the Ponus Bridge project for a little while. The bridge was constructed in nineteen fifty seven. It's located on Ponus Ridge, just downstream from Collins Pond. The bridge has been weight restricted for a few years. It does not meet today's standards. The bridge is in design right now. It'll be bid this winter, and we anticipate construction starting in the spring of two thousand and twenty three and being.
starting in the spring of twenty twenty three and being completed winter before the winter of in the winter of twenty twenty three. So the rights away process, the D O T will send a letter to of intent to acquire necessary right of way for the four affected properties. Basically, we need to expand the right of way approximately ten feet upstream and downstream just of the bridge because we're widening the bridge. A third party appraisal will be performed of those areas. The D O T will then send offer letters of just compensation.
This is the buy the property for the rights away?
It it's, yes, it's to buy the right of way, which is just about, like I said, ten feet north of the of the bridge.
So.
Is this eminent domain? What is what is? So we're going to send an offer, what have they said? That's why that's why the stated this the State of Connecticut D O T has a whole office that does the acquisition rights.
Why is the state even about? Because it's the bridge that they're responsible for?
Because we need the right to construct on the adjacent property and a right to legally would maintain.
So the so it's a it's a federally funded project in the state as well. It's a it's a it's an eighty twenty bridge, right? So eighty percent is paid by the federal government through the state and twenty percent is paid by the town.
Okay.
So the state handles as part of this program, the state handles the design through our office. They hire the contractor, they hire the designer and then come forward with the design. Design shows that we need to widen the bridge, therefore we need to acquire a little bit more land on either side for maintenance and constructability to construct the bridge. We've done it on every single bridge that we've done so far, right? It's just an additional agreement that we do. The D O T has an entire office that takes care of this. They do it throughout the state, so they are well aware of the of the ramifications and trying to treat the residents fairly, right?
But we have to pay for it.
We pay for it, but on an eighty twenty breakout as well. It's part of the cost of the.
So this is the twenty.
This is the twenty, right? And then in the end, they do a an analysis and see whether or not sometimes in the accounting, we've actually received money back, you know, on the.
But I'm just I'm just trying to think. Yeah, as a lawyer, two lawyers. Would if I'm a property, a budding property owner, what are my rights?
So basically, we we give there's a third party appraiser that'll look at the values of those small.
Sounds like eminent domain.
Sounds like eminent.
And then.
It could be. Doesn't get to that.
They don't accept the offer. We go back and we say, here's an offer you have to.
Make an offer you can't refuse.
We've never had to get to that point on any on any of the bridges yet to date, and that's not our.
And we're talking ten feet, right?
We're talking it's 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 an odd shaped right of way in that area and that's why it's not.
But we don't have to. The 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 legal stuff is all done by the state. I think we just we just have to write a check for the twenty percent.
I could show you the area, but it's it's really a small area. It's mostly in the in the river itself.
Are there two neighbors affected?
Four.
Four, four, four corners.
Four.
Or corners.
Yeah.
Do they care? Do they care about losing ten feet?
So we had a public meeting a year ago on this and some of the neighbors showed up. And it was this slide was included in the rights away process were described in the public meeting. And there was no comments about the 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 process.
Was the public hearing part of a bridge approval project by?
Correct.
Wetlands.
Mandatory. No, this is a this is a informational meeting that's mandatory by the D O T. So we had that meeting in another room and like Joe mentioned, a couple of the residents came. We detailed out exactly the process. The D O T comes forward with is is fully transparent on exactly how to how they perform it. And there weren't. There were virtually no concerns.
This is like the West Road Bridge.
It's like the West Road.
As long as the bridge is going to be out through.
One season.
One year?
Once, not one year, one season. So basically, April to hopefully November.
How do we do it in the winter like we did West Road? Is that a war?
We we can certainly look at that, but that just that X, we were delayed in West Road to then work through the winter. This one here, we're hoping not to be delayed. We're hoping to start right in March and April and finish through.
Okay, I think now we understand it.
Okay.
And also there's a resolution we need to approve.
So there's a resolution that was provided by the Connecticut D O T, which must be adopted by the Board of Selectmen. And it basically it simply states that the first selectman is hereby authorized to sign the agreement.
Kathleen, do you have any other questions?
No further questions.
Not here.
Okay.
It's all good.
I move.
Two lawyers.
I will reapprove the request for the money as described by Joe for a hundred forty three thousand dollars for the entry into a contract with Connecticut D O T. Is this the actual money to buy the property or the?
Yes, it includes it includes seventy five thousand dollars basically to buy the property. There's another chunk of money for appraisals and there's just a little administrative costs.
Okay, and then also for the resolution that Joe just described authorized me to sign the agreement with with D O T.
Right.
So I move that. Do I?
Second.
Nick seconds for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, electric chargers for the town hall annex.
So this one is for electrical vehicle charging station for the town hall annex. It will live on the side of the building between the last two parking spots.
Close to the Elm Street.
Closest.
Walkway.
Closest to the Elm Street walkway and it will have two leads to be able to charge two cars. This this was in the works for some time and then there became a rebate available, which will pay for basically half of this system, so we we waited for that to come into play. We put it out on the street for for bids and Centella Electric was the low bid at fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty. So we're looking to enter into agreement with Centella Electric for contract value fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty plus a contingency of fourteen hundred dollars for a total of fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Morse Court people pay their parking fees for the to be there.
Yes, they do.
This this lot is free for visitors to town hall. How are we going to get reimbursed for the cost?
So we can we can decide how that is done. There's a charging.
Can we add it to the?
Yes.
Playhouse lot to go and you have to pay.
Oh, I'm sorry. So so that would be one way to do it. We would have to work it out with the the parking department, but you can do it by charging for the for the spaces themselves or there's apps that you can buy where you can just basically.
We don't intend it to be free because otherwise someone will.
So so right now in Morse Court, you just pay for parking.
Yeah, but you have to.
You're not paying for the charge.
Correct.
If you need to charge for four hours, you're going to pay for four hours of parking.
Yes, that's it. Yes.
Right.
Not overnight.
Not overnight.
Not overnight, right?
Right. Okay.
So at what point are we going to start charging for the electricity? Because people pay for gas.
It's free.
Well, it's free now, but.
People think it's free. Anyway, well, I'll work out the details as to how we're going to charge this with Tucker and Parking Department. But as long as the concept.
Initial commerce conversation with the parking department, there's there's three different ways they can do it. So basically what you described.
Okay, but this is just paying the cost of installation with Centella.
Yes.
Any questions? I move we approve this request from Public Works to enter into contact with Centella Electric Company, Inc. For the installation of the two chargers at the tall hall annex as described by Joe for a total cost of fifteen thousand nine sixty. Second. I think Kathleen seconds for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Now, another one, this is. Why don't you give the background on this?
Sure. So the Department of Public Works is working with the Police Department Building Committee in requesting authorization to enter into professional service contract with Castle Booze Associates, Inc. Prior to requesting final proposals for architectural services for the P D building, the building committee would like to have the opportunity to see what Castle Booze's approach would be to the project. It was determined the best way to do that was to have Castle Booze base create a schematic design of their vision of the renovate as new project at the existing site. This design will include a overall site plan, floor plans, elevations for all facades, a three D fly around. They will also present these findings to the Police Department Building Committee. So the Department of Public Works is requesting approval to enter into a contract with Castle Booze for a lump sum fee of twelve thousand. Their work will be done sometime around May and then we'll get an estimate, May first, and then we'll get an estimate. And the funds for this for these design services are available.
So let me give you the background here that we alluded to before. Michael Diner referred to as conceding the point. The fact of the matter is, my preference all along has been a new building somewhere. We have not been able to find a location somewhere for a new building. We are essentially going to build a new building within the structure on South Avenue. That's why we're going to vacate it. The difference here is that Brian Yums had recommended we keep the back half of the building. This is sort of like a town hall thing. We kept the front of the building. Demolished the back. We built a new back. Castle Booze is really of the mind that you really should build a new building at the back. Their design option will reflect that and then we'll open it up to the two architects as to who gets the contract to do it forward. But I think we're moving probably toward this option or what if finance and the town council may decide they don't want to go with this option. But the fact of the matter is it'll take another month in in the in the contract. We're moving the target date to finish by up to May first.
May first.
So we can then have the cost estimated so that by the middle of May, we're going back to the building committee and then probably a joint meeting of the Board of Affairs, the Town Council to approve a transaction to move to renovate. So that's the plan here. We did have bona fide offers to buy South Avenue for multifamily housing. And but we're we're going to renovate, so that's the background.
I'm good.
Kathleen, any questions?
Good too. I I would just say, just to clarify, so once they come in and when did you say that Castle Booze would be coming in with their revenue in about a month or so?
Yeah, we asked them.
May first.
Take a month. First, yeah.
Okay, and then the cost estimates for both options, assuming that they might be different. We'll get those cost estimates of the two options and then make a decision going forward. Is that the idea?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you.
It may be a better solution. The back half of the building really is the patrol function. And it's important we we give the patrol officers the equivalent of a new building. The administration and the the office workers with records and 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 detectives will be in the main building. And but the, you know, the Police Department buildings are very complex these days. So starting fresh with a whole new building may be the answer. What we're going to look at the cost of that, it'll probably be closer to a new building elsewhere. But anyway.
And does that include the Training Center, the firing range?
No, we've definitely concluded we're not going to be proposing a firing range in the building at South Avenue, have we?
That's correct.
So that we will, we're studying the possibility of collaborating with West Cog's proposal. West Cog is studying a regional firing range. We've talked to Wilton about joining them, but they're they're inclined to join the regional firing range. We're prepared to look at a location in town for for a standalone firing range, possibly collaborating with Darien or another town that needs rifle practice capabilities. So we're definitely that's that's on a separate track, but we definitely plan to move forward with the plan for the fire pistol firing range.
I thank you.
And and concurrently, separate track, we're not delaying the trying to get a decision there as well. Great.
Good news. Thank you.
With that, I move we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Castle Booze Architects as described by Joe for schematic design of the option of building renovation at one seventy four South Avenue.
Second here.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to issue matters, Cheryl. Diane Wilson is coming off of.
Yes, so Diane has been in the and you can join me. Diane has been in the Finance Department for six months. She has acclimated well into this department. She is working closely with Anne on needed changes in this department. She's working well with staff, boards and commissions, and we would like to make a recommendation to bring her off probation.
So Diane, you know, had talents that weren't weren't being fully used. She was part time doing pension mainly and other benefits. And without source the pension with.
Hucker and Holcomb.
Holcomb, but because they have a high floating computer systems to do the kind of calculations that Diane was doing. Diane is, I think, very satisfied to be doing more.
Yeah, she's doing a great job.
She's doing a great job and is doing a great job.
It's all good.
I think the Finance Department is humming.
Yeah, she and I have to speak on her behalf on on knowing the audit and bonding and things she had to do with no CFO basically in place walking into that position. She really did a good job.
Yes. One rough spot we have is the transition to banking. J P Morgan, we're trying to figure that out.
Yeah.
So. But anyway, Diane is doing a great job and as is Yan. Questions?
Not here.
Glad to hear it.
Okay, I move we approve the request from the Director of Human Resources to remove Diane Wilson Controller from the probationary status. Second. Kathleen, second for the discussion, all in favor? Cheryl, thank you, Anne. appointments and reappointments. These are a little backlog in human services, health and human services, I should say. And as I, as we noted earlier, we amended the agenda. Peter Campbell has been recommended by the D E C for one slot and Bob Aikenbaum, who left recently, the head of staying put, has agreed, something I've been trying to convince her to do for two years to join helping human services. She's an excellent advocate for seniors and it's important we have people on that commission that knows the needs of seniors. So Peter Campbell has a specialty in he's on the board of the Norwalk Hospital. He's he's kind of a venture capitalist, but he's venture or private equity. Anyway, the point is we have two appointments and then we also have a vacancy to fill on the Historic District Commission with Arthur Berry, who lives in the district. It's important. We have people that represent. I think we have two other people immediately living in or adjacent to the district. So we all know Art Berry is a former president and current treasurer of the Land Trust and retired money manager. Questions about any of these appointments?
Welcome.
Yeah, they're they're all great individuals and I will bring important resources to each of these commissions. If we could just maybe follow up with a just a a check on how many more openings we might have in either these two commissions or any others, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we're working on a couple of the the chairman of the commissions are vetting the potential nominees and will probably bring more up in two weeks. So I move we approve their these who's approved, who's making these appointments? We are. The appointment of Peter Campbell and Barb Aikenbaum to respective terms of December one, two thousand twenty two and December one, two thousand twenty four. I actually thought these were November. Oh, it's the Historic Districts in November.
Right.
And let's take them together and the Historic District Commission, if you're okay with taking them together.
Sure.
Art Berry for the Historic District Commission for a term ending, four year term ending November fifteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Second here.
For the discussion? All favor, these three appointments? Oh, that's unanimous. Tax over payments is a few automobile tax over payments. I move we approve them. Second, Kathleen? Yes.
Yes, I said second, sorry.
All in favor? Contract, the questions about the contracts, hundred ten thousand dollars? Bristo Bird Sanctuary is being reimbursed by the Friends of Bristo.
That's correct.
I don't know whether there's anybody in recreation here, but just a quick comment on the Mary B cabin, what work might be be done there?
That that work was already done. They've the drainage work that had to be done.
Yes, that was that was actually for the that was materials for the drainage installation in the parking lot that went past the Mary B cabin. I made a note on that invoice just to show where the Mary B cabinets for 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 my reference.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Selectance comments, I would just make a few comments about COVID. We appear to be seeing a bit of an uptick in as Anne would know, I would know. We all seem to be getting it. There's a doctor at Yale says there is a wave coming. So we are seeing an uptick in our testing at Irwin, probably in anticipation of school vacation. Travel, we have seen a we have a vaccination clinic tomorrow with for boosters. travel. Um, we have seen a, we have a vaccination clinic tomorrow with, for boosters for 300 people at Irwin. Um, and, um, Jen Allison would emphasize that, uh, we're going by new standards now in terms of how we look at, uh, the infection rate, I guess, is the, um, the, uh, Connecticut deep part, public health is focusing on hospitalizations and not the, uh, the incidence or the average infection rate. And, um, so we're just learning to live with it. Yes, um, I would note too, yesterday we had a meeting with EverSource Gas. Pura, surprisingly, is having a hearing at the end of the month, um, that would put an end to the expansion of all three gas companies in Connecticut. Sort of a renewables initiative. We are looking, we were looking forward to completing our expansion in the 10-year period that Governor Malloy had set in 2014. Um, so we're hoping that this is not gonna be, uh, what Pura is proposing.
They want, they want to end?
They want to end early the 10-year program that, that had been adopted for, for the expansion of gas in Connecticut.
In terms of funding or?
In terms of taking away the tools that they have to justify expansion. So, um.
That's great.
We're, we're looking for ways to try to influence this decision. Because at least getting through 2020 would be helpful to New Canaan. Um, for the projects we have underway, they, you know, we do have Lappin Center in, in motion and we have the, uh, well, anyway, so, um, but the, uh, the good news is we are gonna proceed in a month or so to start the Elm Street, Pine Street and Grove Street.
May 1 start.
May 1 start. And, um, so all those interested to hook you up on gas for the commercial and also they're doing part of Forest Street or all of Forest Street. So EverSource has been working with us. We're very grateful for their commitments in the Canaan. They've done a lot, um, and, uh, but we really don't want to see the program end prematurely.
Yeah, have they looked at the cost of?
God. Looked at what?
The cost of oil.
That's the crazy thing. It was like, someone's gotta make the electricity and actually the, you know, EverSource Electric doesn't have, you know, it's not as though, it's not a wise decision that they're talking about making. So anything we can do to try to talk to our assembly members and our anyone else, anyone else who knows the governor? Although it's kind of a regulatory process, but sounds politically motivated to me. We need to try to express our opinion of this. I, that's all I have. Anything further?
Along the same lines, um, I just got notification of, uh, the, this renewal of a congressionally directed spending initiative is back and I just I, I'm happy to pass it on, but there's a number of federal government grants that are now available for really lots of projects involving, um, town initiatives. Is there a certain maybe individual in Finance Department or maybe Tucker that, uh, sort of overlooks, uh, grant funding and that I'm?
Anne.
Anne sent it to Anne. Okay, happy to.
She didn't read that part of her job description, but.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have a grant writer, unfortunately. No, actually, I.
Other towns do.
Our former editor of the advertiser.
Yeah.
Greg Riley is a grant writer for this town of Stratford, which is a bigger town, but, um, no, we, we historically figure we don't usually not in the running for federal grants. Um, we don't, generally don't qualify. But we ought to look at anything we, we can, and, and anyway. Anne and others will work on, uh, opportunities. Tiger is constantly looking for things in the, in the public work side. And, and they do provide the funding for bridges and things that, uh, are important.
Yeah.
Anything else? I would move we adjourn at 10:04.
Second year.
All right. All favor?
Hi.
Good day, everyone. Thank you.